Call the Town Council meeting to order for Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. We'll start first at seven oh five. We'll start first with salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Candelora. Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin.
Here.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
Counselor Rose.
Here.
Counselor Vic Leone.
Here.
And Counselor Zampiano.
Here.
Motion to approve the October first, two thousand and nineteen water pollution control authority in Town Council minutes.
Second.
Any corrections?
Correction on item twelve, part D, the third paragraph, just correct the spelling on lean as if it pertains to blight, that's all.
Okay, with that one correction. Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Vic Leone.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
Okay, we'll move into the regular Town Council agenda. Reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Economic Development Commission.
I was not at that. It was on October second, the special meeting, and I was not at that meeting.
But I have a brief report from Roger. I think much of the information has been dispensed, has been shared, and other than the Destination North Branford video is now linked to our website. They have an advanced manufacturing group meeting that's going to be hosted locally here at Honeywell on the twenty-ninth. And there are some significant developments in research and testing with a local company called SPI in their work that they're doing with Con Edison that looks promising and may result in some may result in the request of P&amp;Z to change the zone to add the ability to expand within that property on Forest Road. So the other announcement is that the three E speaking program will be coming back online October twentieth at Smith Library, one o'clock, and the guest speaker will be Amy Patterson, Executive Director of the Connecticut Land Trust Council.
Thank you. Park and Rick.
Their next meeting is next Tuesday, the twenty-second.
Police Commission.
The Police Commission meeting is currently going on. I had to leave it early. I would just make one comment. While I was there, I was very impressed with many of the measures that the police chief is not implementing in terms of trying to prevent speeding and targeting the areas, the hot, what he calls the hot spots where there have been many, many owner-vehicle accidents, and we're starting to see some decrease. And he's really working hard with his police officers to lower the speeding in this town and making, and a lot of people have requested that and prevent the number of owner-vehicle accidents we've had in the past. But the rest of the meeting, I left.
Fire Commission.
Fire Commission, the meeting was canceled this month for lack of reform. Next meeting is next month.
Board of Education and Town Council Communication Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Town Planning Goals Subcommittee.
No meeting.
Planning and Zoning Commission, proposed tax amendments.
That wasn't at the last meeting.
Okay. East Shore Health District Department. North Branford Police Department Facility and Town Center Advisory Committee.
The committee met on October ninth. We did come to some agreements on a few items, and either Al or I will be making one motion tonight in terms of further study.
Finance Subcommittee.
Finance Subcommittee met prior to the council meeting tonight, and it was just to review the drafts of the fire company leases. This is something that we've been working on. The town attorney has now put it in a lease format, and we've approved the draft, and the town manager will now be meeting with the fire houses to go over them and see if they can come to a agreement. Hopefully, everyone will have a consensus. They're basically all three the same except for location and the amount of the lease amount, which is the way it is now. The lease amounts are different.
Thank you. Blight Subcommittee.
Blight Subcommittee hasn't met. They had forwarded the blight proposal, which is on tonight's agenda, and for public hearing.
Thank you. Town Managers' Report, Special Mattress Collection on November second, two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, I put together a memo in your packet. Essentially, we've got an opportunity to do a special collection as part of the e-waste collection scheduled for November second, so that's from nine AM to twelve noon, the public can bring those box springs and mattresses to public works as part of the e-waste collection. This is just a one-time event that we are able to coordinate with the Mattress Recycling Council that will not cost us anything to handle that, taking that out of the bulky waste stream. Those that may have missed it or had more than they could put out, it's just another opportunity to take some of the heavy stuff out of the municipal waste stream. So that's a special event. We posted it on our website. The notice is there, so hopefully people will take advantage of that.
Next is update on simple recycling.
Yeah, I just wanted another opportunity to plug that program. We'll be starting rolling that out November eleventh, and we'll be working on an advertising campaign, a notification campaign, to get the word out on that. So I hope that we'll be successful again in that program, working with textiles and taking clothing, shoes, and other items, household items, out of the waste stream. Again, another opportunity to lower our tonnage as we move forward with our contract with mayor.
Next is update on trash and recycling contract.
Yeah, so Counselor Miller had asked about that, and I thought I'd just indicate to the council that that will be ongoing with the Haz Waste Recycling Committee at their next meeting. I've already mentioned it to them that we'd like their input and begin that process so we can stay ahead of it to prepare it and have it ready for January. Optimistically, January, February, get that packaged and out on the street so we can get a response for them. So that is ongoing at the, or November's meeting at Haz Waste.
Okay, next is update on plan of conservation development.
Yes, I have a memo from Kerry Duquez that the Planning and Zoning Commission finished up their hearing and voted to approve that, so that will go into effect October eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, and will live for ten years up through two thousand and twenty-nine.
And next is community events and presentations. We have three presentations tonight. Plaque. First is for Counselor Anthony Candelora. This commendation is hereby given in recognition and appreciation for your years of service and contributions to our community. Town Council, eleven-ten-oh-nine to eleven-fifteen-eleven as mayor. Town Council, eleven-fifteen-eleven to eleven-twelve-thirteen as mayor. Town Council, eleven-twelve-thirteen to ten-eleven-ten-fifteen as mayor. Town Council from eleven-ten-fifteen to eleven-fourteen-seventeen. And Town Council from eleven-fourteen-seventeen to eleven-twelve-nineteen, presented by the North Branford Town Council, October two thousand and nineteen. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, next is for Al Rose. They had to add on to this plaque a little bit because he has so many titles and ten years here.
They're pretty small there, too.
So this is in recognition for service in the town of North Branford, presented to Al Rose. His commendation is hereby given in recognition and appreciation for your years of service and contributions to our community. Town Council from eleven-twenty-nineteen-eighty-nine to eleven-nine-nineteen-ninety-nine, and eleven-thirteen-oh-seven to eleven-fifteen-eleven. And from eleven-fifteen-eleven to eight-seven-twelve as deputy mayor. And from eleven-twelve-thirteen to eleven-twelve-nineteen. Finance Subcommittee from one-seventeen-twelve to eight-seventeen-twelve. Pension Committee from eleven-thirteen-oh-seven to seven-eight-seven-twelve, alternate due to resignation from Town Council. Jerome Harrison, FRC Project Building Committee from eight-ten-ten to eight-ten-eleven. Permanent Project Building Committee from seven-twenty-three-oh-seven to twelve-ten-oh-seven. Land Preservation Committee from five-twenty-one-ninety-six to six-fifteen-ninety-nine. Town Council member from six-fifteen-ninety-nine to six-nineteen-oh-one. Alternate public member from six-nineteen-oh-one to three-oh-eight. Regular election member. Zoning Board of Appeals from three-eighteen-eighty-nine to eleven-twenty-eighty-nine, elected to the Town Council. Housing Authority from six-nineteen-eighty-four to eleven-eighteen-eighty-five. This is presented by the Town Council, October two thousand and nineteen. That's one of the record books there.
He must be pretty old. He's spoken like a true white.
He's very experienced.
And then last but not least.
Shorter, though. Be a lot more brief.
In recognition of service in the town of North Branford, presented to George I. Miller. This commendation is hereby given in recognition and appreciation for your years of service and contributions to our community. Town Council eleven-ten-fifteen to eleven-fourteen-seventeen. Town Council eleven-fourteen-seventeen to eleven-twelve-nineteen, presented by the North Branford Town Council, October two thousand and nineteen. All right, moving on. Next is citizen statements, petitions, and correspondence. Just before I go, it was a pleasure to work with these three gentlemen. One has a, how can we say it, a stake in North Branford, you know. He's been here a long, long time, a lot of experience, a lot we depended on for his experience and expertise. Anthony was right there with us, leading us, and George, our newcomer, only two terms with us, but he'll be missed. Again, thank you very much for your service. All right, we have, first item is correspondence from Bill Savastano on blight ordinance.
Yeah, you know, Bill was here last meeting and asked for his letter to be put in the package, so it's included.
Thank you.
And we have the blight, or public hearing for seven-thirty.
Next item is resignation appointments. We have none.
Actually, Mayor, if I could, under that item, I missed one, or I would like to add just the fact that for public announcement, Smith Library will be closed ten-twenty-one next week. That is the HVAC system issue that they're going to be working on. They'll open at five PM, so we're hoping that day to get that work done and get them back up and running. Make that an announcement.
Oh, and I just wanted to mention one thing is that the Community Day roundup is going to be on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, and this is the day, this is a major day for the food bank for collection. So they have teams from the middle school and high school that will go out and collect food. You can leave it out by your mailbox. They will come around. The town is divided up into sections. They will come and collect it for you, and it's all sorted out and brought to the food bank. So this is a major opportunity for the food bank for food collection. So that's on, and it's Saturday morning.
What was the date?
The twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, thank you.
Next, move into unfinished business, discussion in action, future budget planning initiative.
I have no items.
Update on nine forty-four Totoka Road remediation.
Good evening. I'll be brief. Since the last report and the last meeting, I received written verification that the grades are in accordance with the design plan. And since then, they've heralded the area, and they, today they were actually seeding it. They're a little later than I hoped for, but they're putting down the seed today. So that should pretty, hopefully that should pretty much wrap up everything. There's a little miscellaneous material stored and some debris that they put out of the basin area that they created that they'll be getting rid of shortly over time. But they did a nice job in the basin, so we're very pleased with the grading plan. So hopefully this pretty much wraps it up. Let me give a few final touches. That's it at this point.
Thank you.
Kurt, I had one just question. Down here on Route eighty, the bridge, is that complete now?
It's essentially complete, yeah. I don't know if there's any minor thing left, but I think, you know, it's substantially complete, but yes.
Do we sign off on it when it is complete?
No.
I mean, how do we know?
On the bridge?
Yeah.
On the bridge, it's a state bridge. I can check with them and see if there's anything outstanding. I'll, I can report it for the next meeting. But essentially, they're pretty much done at this point. And again, it's a state project, so the final.
I understand, but do they formally tell us when they are complete?
When they're substantially complete. Sometimes there might be some punch list items that they have to come back on. I will check and then, check and verify.
Next is Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty through two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five. The eight twenty-four response from Planning and Zoning.
Correct. This is a follow-up to the meeting on the first where they were sent out to P&amp;Z for an eight twenty-four referral. You have the letter in there from Kerry Duquez, Town Planner. They did favorably review it and forwarding it back to the Town Council. In my cover memo, I did address the comments that Counselor Zampiano mentioned that as it relates to the police station, he's a hundred percent correct. It's in the recommended column, but it's never been formally voted on by this body. My only hesitation, my only concern would be that if it does proceed to a bonding project this year, one of the key parts of a bond resolution is that it has to be in an adopted CIP. So you're a hundred percent correct that it was not formally voted on by this body, and we could certainly remove it if that's the will of the Town Council. But again, if our goal is to bond in this fiscal year, it needs to be in an adopted CIP. So if you're looking to do it next year, we could certainly forego it and then put it into two thousand and twenty-one. Or if you're looking to bond this year, it needs to be in an adopted CIP. The number is also incorrect. The six million is an old number, and it's now seven, seven and a half. Numerous variations out there. So I put that out there for your discussion. If you want to include it, if you think it's going to proceed, it needs to be in an adopted CIP. If you want to hold off a year, that's your call as well.
So if we took it out of the CIP and adopted the CIP tonight.
Without it.
Can, without it, can we come back to the CIP for nineteen-twenty and re-adopt with it in?
It's typically one, it's typically one shot.
So what happens if we don't adopt it right now?
You could, you could definitely postpone it. You could think, you know, think about it for another month or so. You could sit on it and not act on it. We've done it as late as December in some years when the budget has been kind of up in the air.
Does it hold up any other projects by not having an adopted CIP?
Negative.
And if it's in the CIP, that's not a mandate that it must be done this year, is it?
That is correct. No, that's not. It's not a mandate. It's just a requirement of the bond resolutions. It has to be referenced in an adopted CIP.
But what if the amount is wrong? Because it's only in there for six.
Six.
And if it, if, depending on what happens, and if we decide to go forward with a full new construction, and it's seven and a half.
Right.
It's not correct in the CIP.
You're a hundred percent correct. I would think with the uncertainties that are out there, it might be worth tabling this whole topic until you have a chance to digest it and get a formal game plan where you're going with some more concrete numbers.
I don't feel comfortable adopting it with the six million in there, especially if you know that the six million is not true.
Right. I mean, we could change it to whatever number you want to put in there or just sit on it and wait till the process plays out a little more.
Well, the only time this council has talked about monies for this is when we talked about it initially, and it was a million, million and a half. So we've never had a discussion.
Right.
At six million or seven and a half or nine and a half, which is what it was at one point in at least discussions. These are just numbers being thrown, so.
Yeah, I think, I think we should sit on it, too. We have a new council coming in.
Okay.
I would feel comfortable with that.
The eight twenty-four referral will still stand. The project's in there, albeit that the number is an incorrect number, but that was the number that we had back at the budget time. And again, I think there's so many uncertainties, and I think it might be worth just tabling it and coming back to it maybe, you know, November, December, when we have some more concrete information.
I'd like to make a motion to table the CIP nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, twenty through two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second. And they said, "Is new business discussion in action?" Any further discussion?
Well, I just have one question on the bonding.
Yes.
Shouldn't there be more discussion with the council as far as the bonding goes?
Oh, certainly, certainly. The bond resolutions will come back before you when the time comes. Again, procedurally, it would be in an adopted CIP. You'd have a firm number. We'd get bond counsel engaged. They'd prepare bond resolutions back before the council to bless. Then it would go to financial advisor and market and everything else. So there's a long, there's a series of hurdles to go through still. So I think tabling is probably a prudent move at this point.
I guess my other question would be, six point five or seven million, means a lot of money, don't get me wrong, but to build a police station, and the other area towns that have built police stations, it doesn't seem like the right amount of money.
Yeah, they're all ten, twelve plus.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
So I just don't, okay, where that number came from.
I haven't been, I haven't been to those meetings where that committee has met, to be honest with you. So I'm not quite sure what the basis of that seven or seven and a half is. But you're right, I think North Haven, and they started with an existing basis and expanded from there, and they were significantly more in other towns. So you're right. Again, I don't know what the right number is.
Well, my understanding of it was it was more of an exploratory to see what it would cost.
Before we voted.
Right, I mean, so.
Once we got numbers.
But we're, but I don't, I don't understand how we could vote on something. We had two options, rebuild, you know, rebuild or build new, and we compared the two. But all the emphasis, all the, all the efforts been put into new, so how would we compare it against the rebuild? I'm just throwing that out there. It's kind of like that, that's kind of got lost somewhere.
Yeah, he's right. I never heard any figures in building.
Yeah, I guess I haven't, don't sit on that committee that, there's a subcommittee that was formed for that whole process, and I haven't been to those meetings, so I'm not sure if any of the council people that have been there had that information per se as far as the expansion cost versus new. I don't know who was on that committee.
I think, I think part of the problem is that we've looked at different sites, which has affected in some ways the size if it were to be a new facility. We've also talked about some other options to remove some things from the facility. I think what's happened is over the course of the last couple of months, the architect has come back with different variations, and I think we're getting to the point where, you know, we have to say, you know, this is the variation that we're looking at, kind of a thing. And a lot of it's going to depend upon the site for one, for one part.
Well, part of, part of doing any building is for whatever your use is, and we don't have the sized apartments of some other, some other communities. And I have no idea how you cost these, these things out, you know, practically, but if it's seven and a half million, then it's like over three hundred thousand dollars per officer that we're employing. We're buying them each a house. So it's a lot of money.
I'd like to see figures on everything before I make any kind of a decision.
And also keep in mind, too, the old police station, you know, that building, what we could use that for. You know, should that be abandoned and we do go to new rather than renovating? You know, that building may, I don't know, a house, something else.
Or we could extract it out of this, this CIP totally and give you time to digest it in time for two thousand and twenty-one. You think it's going to wait that long to get these answers, these questions answered? If you think it's going to wait till two thousand and twenty-one, we could adopt it without that.
The committee's moving forward.
Okay.
And, you know, they're, they're down to where they have one site in mind, and.
Okay.
So they're moving, they're moving in that direction, so.
Okay.
All right, roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Candelora.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin.
Yes.
Counselor Miller.
Yes.
Counselor Rose.
Yes.
Counselor Vic Leone.
Yes.
Counselor Zampiano.
Yes.
And next is new business discussion in action. All right, we could start the public hearing at seven-thirty PM on the proposed blight ordinance, two thousand and nineteen dash two. Want to read the notice?
The notice of the public hearing. The North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven-thirty PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers. Purpose of the public hearing will be to hear comments on proposed ordinance, two thousand and nineteen dash two, entitled Property Maintenance Standards and Blight Abatement, as summarized below. The purpose of this new ordinance is to establish standards for the development, redevelopment, and maintenance of real property in the town of North Branford, including residential, commercial, and industrial properties, and to establish an abatement process for blight and nuisance violations. This ordinance shall apply uniformly to all real property in the town, but exempts property owned by the town, agricultural lands as defined in chapter twenty-two dash three B of the Connecticut General Statutes. of the Connecticut General Statutes, land dedicated as public open space or preserved in its natural state through conservation easements, or areas designated as inland wetlands and watercourses. Public comments on this matter are welcome. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the town clerk at Water Memorial Library, Edward Smith Library, and posted on the town's website. Dated at North Branford, the second day of October two thousand nineteen, Lisa Valenti, town clerk, and it was published in The Sound on October tenth, two thousand nineteen.
So I was part of a group of citizens who got together and wanted to talk about blight in the town. The citizens put together a draft of what they thought would be good after looking at a few other towns and, in particular, the documents from East Haven. What they found was that our town, it's one of the very few to not have a blight ordinance, and sought to have the council consider their draft. The council put together a blight committee, served by two town counselors, myself and Councilor Rose, two members of the Planning and Zoning Committee, Bill Galdenzi and Alex DeFrancesco, and a public member, Virginia Fallon, helped by the town attorney. Several meetings took place, and a draft was formed, and the town attorney helped edit and work it into useful form. That is before us this evening. The purpose of the blight ordinance is to provide the mechanism to keep, essentially, keep our town tidy. This fills a gap between the rules of planning and zoning, and the fire marshal, and having basically nothing else to fall back on. The community sometimes encounters problems with, with residents not taking care of their property, and there is no mechanism to help them correct some of the problems. More importantly, since two thousand oh eight, as all of us know, with, with the financial crisis, many homes and homeowners have suffered foreclosures, and banks have taken over many properties. And we know how well banks take care of properties and how long they remain unattended to. And it causes great problems in many neighborhoods. Certainly, it was in my neighborhood on multiple occasions. And we have to live with these, these problems. The blight ordinance directly addresses that type of a situation because it puts this town, it puts your town first in line to get reimbursed for expenses and to push the banks, which are otherwise not responsive, to keep, keep the properties well. So that's a huge issue, along with the rest of the usefulness of, of it. In drafting this, one of the things the committee was aware of and very careful about was an effort to have this be able to be enforced with the current staff that the town has. We only just very recently in time started to employ part-time a zoning enforcement officer, and to put this entirely on the hands of the zoning enforcement officer didn't make any sense. So, and most towns have a dedicated blight officer, by the way. But it allowed enforcement for this to be diffused through frontline employees existing here who encounter problematic properties in the course of their duties, and they could be handled on a routine basis. There's not a lot of them. There's no likelihood that there's going to be a lot of them, but they are there. So it was meant to be able to be implemented and executed with existing staff and not cause the town to employ anyone further or to incur any other particular expenses. So I would ask the town attorney to speak to at least some of these points, and perhaps Councilor Rose wishes to as well.
Absolutely. So the ordinance sets forth standards on various subject matters that are contained in the document. If there is a complaint regarding a violation of any of those standards, there is a process that can be followed, depending upon the severity of the complaint. And the discretion on which direction, what, what direction is employed is up to the enforcement officer. There is the traditional citation process, which is likely going to be the common process that is employed if adopted. And that would, the enforcement officer would issue a citation to the property owner indicating what the violation is, as well as stating that the property owner has a, is exposed to pay fines at the rate of a hundred dollars a day, that they have the right to contest any claim of liability that is presented, and that, that a contest must be filed within ten days from the date of citation, and that if no appeal is taken by the property owner, that an assessment and a judgment would be entered against the property owner without any further notice. The property owner does not have to appeal. If the property owner agrees that they are in violation of the ordinance, they would then simply pay the fine and correct the violation. If there is an appeal taken, a hearing must be held before the hearing officer in accordance with the ordinance, and in accordance with Connecticut General Statute seven dash one fifty-two C, so that a hearing is held not less than fifteen days nor more than thirty days from the date of the notice of appeal. If the parties agree, the hearing officer can extend the hearing date beyond that window. If the hearing officer then determines that there is a violation, the hearing officer would sustain the findings of the enforcement officer, and then the town could reduce the hearing officer's decision to a judgment by recording it with the court, paying a fee of eight dollars, and then recording a judgment lien against the property owner's real estate. If the hearing officer disagrees with the hearing off, with the enforcement officer, the appeal would be sustained and the matter would be dismissed. If the subject matter of the complaint is severe enough, there is an option to proceed directly to court and obtain judicial relief immediately for faster relief. In, in a nutshell, that is how the process would be played out.
Just one question. We got a note here from the assessor wishing to be withdrawn from that.
Right. So there are, the subcommittee did list a laundry of, a laundry list of potential enforcement officers, feeling that the more enforcement officers that were authorized to take action, the, I guess the work would be, would be shared, and it'd be easier implementation. The assessor felt that that could put him in a moment of conflict because he does issue, he does render opinions as to valuation on the property when it comes to revaluation, and he just felt uncomfortable that if he was having to opine on whether or not there was blight or not, that that could create conflicts for him.
And he had, he cited a couple of examples about different inspectors and agents that they employ.
Right.
That would be strapped financially if.
Right. There, right. So what is before you is an ordinance that contains, right?
Before we finalize it, is, should we leave the assessor in, or should we take him out? What is our?
Well, the, if I'm advising you of what came out of the subcommittee, what's, what's out of the subcommittee is what's before you. Through the, after the close of the public hearing, it is within the discretion of this body if you were so inclined to adopt the ordinance to make modifications. If you felt that for uniformity purposes, that it should be limited by way of an enforcement officer, it could be simply the zoning enforcement officer. It could be, it could be a multi, a number of people, as is suggested. It, it could be reduced from what is there down to a few. I believe, is there also from the police chief?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could speak to that.
Yes.
I think the police chief feels very strongly that, police officers are supposed to be dealing with criminal matters, not civil matters. And you, there's a hand up in our pocket, plus he has spoken to me about that. He feels very strongly that they should not be enforcing zoning regulations or problems. But, you know, they, they should be on a site if there's a problem with like a homeowner that gets upset or whatever, but that they should not be the ones, just as the town assessor should not be doing it. They should not be enforcement officers.
And I will be very happy to speak on a contrary point of view to Chief Halloran.
Right. I, I would just, for purposes of this moment, and of course we're in the public hearing process, we should just save deliberations for after the close of the public hearing. So if people have questions, we should put that into the public hearing, hear from the public, and then have our debate and deliberation after it's closed. But so for purposes of the process, though, ultimately, Mr. Mayor, you would have the ability to make those modifications if, if the body so chose.
Anybody want to talk on the blight ordinance?
Good evening. My name's Frank Bergano. I live on Montgomery Drive in Northford, formerly of Totucket Road in, in Northford. I was on the ad hoc committee that appeared here about a year ago with George and others to talk about the need for a blight ordinance. I strongly believe this town needs a blight ordinance, and I urge you to move forward on this. At the time that we spoke to you, I talked about the fact that I believe that an ordinance needed to be heartfelt, and that there should be means of reaching out to the churches and other community groups in town to help residents that need assistance. And I'm happy to see under section two point O, that there is a section in there that allows the town to work with community groups like churches, et cetera, to help elderly, disabled, low-income, and others to come and comply. And I think that's extremely important, a piece of this. Notwithstanding where there are issues where people are just blatantly, blightful, I guess is the right word, it needs to be enforced. But I can tell you that the town of North Haven, this is my personal experience through the church that I go through, they do have an individual that does reach out to the church communities in town. And the churches, and I have been part of that, have gone out to homes to cut grass, to cut, to cut branches, et cetera, to clean people's property up to get it to where they should be. On a personal note regarding people that have been designated to enforce, as a father of a police officer, I do agree with the police chief. I do not believe that the police should be part of the group that would enforce it. I think it compromises their position. And again, speaking as a dad of a police officer, I worry about their safety in situations like that. So I don't, I don't think they should do that. But I do think we need this ordinance. I felt we've needed a long time. There's a number of incidences in town where there's obvious blight. Get, as, as George Miller said, there's not a lot, but there's enough. And as someone that sits on inland wetlands and have seen personally issues of blight, they're, they're, in, in, in the wetlands, which, as a tree hugger, that really bothers me, we, we need something like this. So again, I urge the town to move forward with this, to pass it, to enforce it, and also to put somebody in a position where they can reach out to the churches and community groups to have help and assistance to, for people that can't do it on their own. Thank you.
I'm on Route seventeen, Northford. I've got a question more than, right now, two houses, three houses down from me, there's foreclosure sign up on the old Gannon property. There was a death. Everybody just walked away from the house. It's a mess. There, there was a swimming pool there that's probably still open. Nothing's been done to the house. It's in complete disarray. But again, now, who would I talk to? This is what I need, we need. We need to know. Well, hey, it's a foreclosure sale. The original owners are long gone. There's an eternity's name on the sign. So who do we get after until this is sold? I think the twenty-sixth is the day of the sale. But even then, when the new owner comes in, who starts cleaning the mess up? And I mean, this would be a good test case to see if this is really going to work or not. All summer, because the owners walked away from it, nobody took care of it. It sometimes should have somebody from the blight committee or whoever's going to be involved with this been made aware of it. And I just want to know, how is this going to work? How is this going to help? I agree we need it, but is it going to work? And I hope it does because, you know, it was a beautiful piece of property when the Gannons owned it. It's looking pretty bad now. And, I mean, it, they just walked away. There was three or four families living there. Do you remember that, Mike? There was a motorhome up on the hill, and I think the, the woman's died, and it's just a mess now. And, I mean, it, I'm probably not the only case you're going to ever hear about, but I just want to know what happens now. And if somebody could give me advice, who do we talk to? I can give you a copy of the, the attorney? Does the blight people go to the attorney that's handling the foreclosure? I mean, where do they, where does it start, and who follows the trail? Thanks.
Cliff, on that note, and I think George may know, we're the town attorney. The bank normally, I believe, notifies the clerk's office, right?
When there's going to be a foreclosure, you mean?
When there's going to be a foreclosure. So that could be the starting point, right there, when the clerk is notified.
The whole point is to learn about these problems.
Right.
And this is a mechanism for, that is most effective for the unresponsive financial institutions.
As Cliff was saying, when they do go with the foreclosure, notify the clerk, that could be the first step to notifying.
To look at the piece of property. I mean, it's.
The ultimate answer to your question is, is it depends on the situation. Technically, it's always, it depends. It depends on the facts that, as presented. Under that situation, the, the banker's not yet the owner of the property. And technically, as a matter of title, it's still, it's still vested in the estate of the decedent.
Because it says right there, it's the lawyer, it's the homeowner.
Well, the lawyer is likely the committee appointed by the court to conduct the auction.
But while all this is taking forever, who's going to clean the property up?
That's, so that's, that's the issue. And, you know, in certain instances, the town has the right to enter and clean and lien.
I mean, for all we know, there could be somebody that's in that swimming pool. If it wasn't covered up, right? It's probably a health issue. So you got health issues, safety issues.
Whenever, whenever you deal with issues with real property, you have to look at all avenues under, whether the building code, the zoning regulations, the health, health code, and you have to use whatever tool is best available to address the matter of most concern.
Yeah.
The blight ordinance is designed to be an additional tool that has some greater leverage, because if, if employed properly, it provides the municipality with superior lien only behind its real estate taxes. So it incentivizes the mortgage lender to address the situation, because by having a lien that jumps ahead of its mortgage, it jeopardizes some of its priority equity.
Does the town ever get notified when people just walk away? I mean, it looks like you must get the tax bills.
Yeah, typically the neighbor will call.
Okay.
You know, and because it does get overgrown, or like you said, it becomes a, a health and safety issue, whether you do. safety issue, whether either the building itself, or in this case, the pool is where we bring the healthcare, health department in to bring sanctions to have that, that covered, or fenced, or whatever, or drained, or whatever needs to be done.
I can help you drain it. But I mean, it's, I just saw the sign. It's been up in the last week or so, so something's going to happen, but, but boy, for a year, it's just been sitting there, and everybody just walked away. The mother who was holding everything together died, and nobody picked up the ball, and everybody just walked away. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on the blight ordinance?
Hi, Chris Kranick, 49 Cortland Drive. First, I want to thank the town council for taking this under consideration, and the committees who worked on it. I know it's, it's a, it's a big topic in a lot of ways, and I think they did a really good job putting this together. I do support this ordinance, this property standard. As a real estate agent, and also as a resident, as a, as a real estate agent, I could just, you know, briefly share with you, you know, we sell more than the house, you know, we sell the neighborhood, we sell the town, the school system, and there's been many times I'm out with a client on our way to a house that's at the back of a neighborhood or what have you, and we're driving past houses, and it definitely poisons their feeling about that house. If they're driving past houses that are a bit of an eyesore. So I would ask that you take that into consideration. I think appearances are important. I think the town has picked up some momentum with the new, just the new North Branford signage. And I just think this is another, you know, step in the right direction that I think will benefit the town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Savistano, 43 Sunnyside Drive. First, to the councils that are unbelieving us, thanks for your years of service. Also, a big thanks to Attorney Moreno and the committee that, you know, worked on this blight ordinance. I was part of, part of it to get started. I went through a couple of meetings, and it's been really good. Thanks to the council for hearing about it, for letting us have a public hearing. One, you received the letters that I had wrote, and then there was an article that was done this hour, and I hope you read them. I think, I think a lot is there, especially when we talk about how this thing all got started a year ago. I was surprised the zoning enforcement officer is not here. On the first meeting that we did have, that I went to, he presented some items that he would like to see in the ordinance, and that's really what this is all about. We didn't have an ordinance quote that said blight, but he needed to put more tools in there so he could do his job. And as, as, I won't speak for him, but I think from the list that I was giving in the beginning, I, I think they've been implemented in this ordinance, and care has been taken to do the right thing here. So I'm just surprised that Tom wouldn't be here to speak to, actually tell you that it is what you, what you wanted. I just think this whole thing is fair all around. It's not meant to be punitive, you know, the farms are excluded. It's really for the person that violates, and continues to violate. I spoke my piece last week, I think you might remember our last meeting. But there, and there's more issues. And the important thing is, it's not all about the extremes. It's all about the in-betweens, the people that are getting, that are halfway to holding, are halfway to a mess. Those are, those are the reasons why we need it. Now Frank mentioned something before about how we can, it is going to be a situation where you might be coming along across a senior citizen, an older couple. I can give an example, mention addresses, but there could be a situation, they're living on a fixed income, they can't afford to have somebody cut their, cut their own grass. Those people need help. Or maybe, as Frank said, there's, if something was set up in town that could help them. I mentioned before about we have social services. There's only one person in that office. And I mentioned a few meetings back, and someone else mentioned also, I think you ought to recommission that Public Safety Communications, and I think it was Chief Sue that mentioned it, and add welfare to it. And that could be a commission that could help, could be a liaison to help some of these people. So that's it for now. I'm going to see if anybody wants, wants to talk, I'll reserve my right to come back up. Thank you.
Good evening. Dottie Savistano, 43 Sunnyside Drive, Northford. I'm going to start with a very short story, really short. We moved to Northford in 1992 from a very nice neighborhood that I grew up with, in which was Fairhaven Heights in New Haven. Over time, that neighborhood, we moved back thereafter, we were married, and stayed there for another 20 years. In time, what was a really nice neighborhood back in the 1950s deteriorated. People didn't care. You talked about a pool. I remember later, there was a pool for maybe three years that the house was in foreclosure that was still, had water in it and stuff. So we decided to move to a small town. We looked at surrounding towns, Cheshire, Milford, North Haven, couldn't find a neighborhood, and then the process was that our real estate person would say, I have a house for sale. I would go and look at the neighborhood. I'd drive around, is it a nice neighborhood? Are the people taking care of their land? Are, you know, looked at the town, looked at the house, and then I'd say, okay, Bill, we'll look at the house. And that's what we did. I found a very nice neighborhood, Sunnyside Drive, if you know it, it's really nice. But in time, there's problems that come in, and nobody takes care of them, just like in my neighborhood in New Haven. So I think what's really needed here is the process. You know, everybody could complain and complain, but that doesn't do anything. It doesn't get taken care of. So really, I think the key is to have an equitable process, not punitive, not harsh, not, I don't think the policeman should be the first person on site, but if needed, a follow-up, and have a process that really works. And the tools, the people who enforce this process have to have the tools to enforce it. You can't just say, oh, come, you know, you got to clean this place up. Well, okay, okay, I will, I will, and it never gets done. You need the fines, you need whatever indicates, whatever's indicated to get that problem solved. I don't think anybody wants a blight problem either next door to them, around the block, or anywhere in the town that we live. It's a beautiful town. That's why we moved here, and I think we should keep it that way. Thank you.
Any other comments on the--
I'm Joe Pendolphy. I live at 48 Glenwood Road, North Branford. Been here for about 20, 25-plus years, and I'm probably going to be the most hated person in this room. I'm not for this ordinance. I think that it has far-reaching detrimental effects for the residents of North Branford. I feel that it will turn out to be eventually neighbor against neighbor, tattling on one another, or residents just making up their minds, saying that, I just don't like the way this property is maintained. This is not a gated community. We all pay property taxes. This, we should not be a gated town where we have rules and regulations. I do agree that certain areas, like you say, bank foreclosures, where they don't maintain their properties, things should be done. But for the residents to have property maintenances on how residents must maintain their property, to me, is absurd. Thank you very much.
Bill Savistano. Just a point there, in reference to the gentleman's remarks. Every town around us has a blight ordinance. We're the only ones that doesn't. In fact, ours is more, what you have in front of you, is more lenient than other towns. I could stand up here 20 minutes, and I've done some homework on this stuff, about how other towns really come down on it. It's not what we're doing. Thanks.
Phil, can you assure the gentleman that if I cut my grass at two and a half inches, and he cuts his grass at three and a half inches--
What does it say anything about two and a half inches?
He won't be cited for it?
What's that?
He won't be cited for it? This is what, this is what scares people about blight ordinances, is, it gets really sticky and really picky. As to how you maintain your property, how you cut your lawn--
No, it isn't about that at all.
Well, no, this is what concerns people.
I understand that, and that's why we're having the public hearing.
Right.
Because it's not two and a half inches or three and a half inches. It's over 12 inches for, on a continuing, ongoing basis. You know, it's, it's overgrown, it's, and we're not talking, I mean, we're just not talking about trying to make a gated community out of this really beautiful agricultural community. It's for the exceptions to the rule. It is clear when we've talked to blight officers in other communities that they're extraordinarily careful, extraordinarily alert at the possibility of having neighbor against neighbor, and they have mechanisms by which they look to protect people. It's, it's not picky, it's for really egregious violations of what people might consider reasonable. You know, the, the town attorney in discussions talked about large objects being put on people's lawns as, as just dumped there, but claimed to be art objects. These are problems, we may encounter those. There's lots of problems, but there's no, no real hard and fast rule, and if there's anything in, in this, it's just a tremendous amount of discussion and protections that, that abuse really is not going to occur. So I'm, I'm comfortable arguing for that point of view.
All right, I got to have to say something. Our zoning enforcement officer, Tom--
We have one, yeah, hard time.
--will be, will be involved in this. I guess he'll be running the program, running the show. I've got to know him pretty good. He's a great guy, he's an retired police officer, and, and he uses a lot of common sense when it comes to things like this. I know a couple of situations that he's been in, and actually, one of them is right next door here, the car lot next door. There was a mess, and he went in, and he did, he knew it was just what he had to do, and he took care of it. But I don't think, I think he would use common sense when he has to deal with any of this, because that's the kind of guy he is, and I know him pretty good. So I think we'll be okay.
Mr. Mayor, just point of order, just since we're talking about establishing a process, just as far as the public hearing process, before we get too deep into back and forths and deliberations and discussions, I think the part, the point of the public hearing process is for this council to take in comments from the public. The public has started to speak, I don't know if they finished to speak, but you might want to see if there's anyone else from the public that wants to speak. If not, close it, and then have this type of dialogue during the deliberation portion. Otherwise, you're going to potentially have it twice.
As I mentioned before, it was Tom that really came to the first meeting with the tools he needed. He came with that whole thing on deliberation, and spelling it, spelling it out, and that coincides with all the other towns around. So there's nothing over, over and above that we're looking for here, just property standards. Everybody should conform to something.
Thank you.
My name is Art Kaplan. I live in Deerfield Hills, and we were up here since 1973. And when we moved up here from the city, from New Haven, Route 80 was just a two-lane road, and it took you 20 minutes to go from the Cumberland Farms to Tilcon intersection. And we drove up, and we looked at a nice neighborhood, and we said, what a beautiful neighborhood it was. It was clean, it was orderly, and we moved up here, and we've been very pleased, you know, with the services that the town has provided, and we just, I just want to enforce the fact that I am also in support of this blight law. I think the foreclosure situations go a little deeper into the legalities, but when you have neighbors that are, that have toilets on their front lawn, and mattresses on the front lawn, I live in a neighborhood with 55 residences, and 10% of the residents have some form of blight. Toilets on the front lawn with kids, mattresses, automobiles that are covered with grass. I think the architects of this, of these standards need to be commended, but I, I just want to enforce the fact that this blight law, this blight ordinance is, is much needed. I, on numerous occasions, have had to call the governor's office because of Route 80 in front of Big Y, littered with styrofoam boxes and, and just trash. And there was one day where I drove by, and there was at least 100 blue diapers, obviously from a nursing home, that was spewed across Route 80 right in front of Big Y, and I called the Department of Highway Maintenance in Hartford, and within a week, they had it cleaned up. And on a couple of other occasions, when it also became untidy again, I made other calls to the Department of Highway Maintenance and the governor's office, and they responded really very quickly. So I think the architects need to be commended, commended, and I hope seriously that you consider implementing this, this ordinance.
Frank Bergano. I just wanted to state one more thing that's in the ordinance, to make sure everybody understands. This isn't like a sledgehammer that's going to hit somebody over the head, that somebody goes out there today and says, hey, there, your grass is over 12 inches, you have to do something. The ordinance is very clear that the person gets 30 days for corrective action. And again, I believe, I believe that's more than enough time. I think it shows, again, that this is a heartfelt ordinance, because it does allow other options to solve problems, and once again, I urge you guys to approve it.
Let's say one last thing, I think you remember from last week. The person on my street that's a severe hoarder was interviewed by Channel 8, and it's up there, anybody can view it. And the flavor you can get out of, of where this man is coming from, he's, he's got a problem, actually. But the reporter asked him point blank, did the town officials come out? Yeah, they threatened to find me, but they never did. So that's the reason why we need enforcement. That property could have been cleaned up years ago, maybe. And by the way, our zoning enforcement officer has cleaned up on his own, has, not personally do it, but he's done a great job on, on some of the severe cases in town, so he's not coming down on town, he's out there.
It sounds like it's getting very technical when you're going to measure the lawn's size. Has anybody thought about the deployed soldiers, men and women, who are going to be gone for over a year? And maybe they just are down to the one-parent households who can't keep up. Are you going to give them a waiver? Are you going to harass them because they're not keeping the community standards? I just think there's too many loopholes. You got to be careful, because life happens, and you can't cover it all in this one little piece of legislature. So there's things here you got to really think about. Thank you.
Obviously Cliff didn't read my article I put in the thing. There's nobody harassing anybody. Come on. How many times have you got to be said? How many times have you got to be said? We're getting harassed right now.
I want to leave on a good note. I want to thank, personally thank the police department and the fire department. I needed an emergency earlier in the summer, they responded with 10 minutes. I also want to comment on the public works department, because whenever I've called, they've always been there in a very timely manner, and I also want to congratulate Mr. Rose for his future endeavor. I've been in the restaurant business for 40 years, all I can say is, good luck. Your building looks really very attractive, by the way.
Thank you. Any further comments?
I'm Joe Gandolfi again, 48 Glenwood Road. It seems pretty obvious, just by the discussions we've been hearing tonight, that it's the few who think that what's best for the masses, that's all I'd like to say.
Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moving on, new business discussion in action, confirmation of director of public works.
Parks and Rec.
Park and Rec. Sorry, Frank.
Did you know you were-
We're replacing you, Frank. Frank, you coming with me?
Mr. Mayor, just again, for the point of order, just so the council's aware, to the extent, there has been movement without vote, we're construing that as unanimous consent, and we're just recording it as unanimous consent in the minutes.
Close up here.
So, there was no vote, but we recorded as unanimous consent.
So, remove vote.
Thank you.
All right, table, confirmation of director of Parks and Rec to after executive session. Next is discussion of North Branford Police Facilitating Town Center.
Mr. Mayor, the committee has been looking at a different site for the police facility, for if we have a new police facility. I think the committee made a motion, and it was unanimous, that they'd like to look at a different site, and that site would be across the street, not asking for approval of that tonight. But I would like to make a motion for the town council to approve up to $12,000 to conduct topographical and architectural studies of 305 Forest Road as possible location for a new police facility. Money to come from contingency. I think the committee feels very strongly that that would save us a lot of money if we moved there rather than having to move a ball field, which would cost probably about $300,000 in addition to a new facility. And we see a lot of potential in that facility, I know that Franny's looked at it, but we need to have a study, both the topo and an architectural study. So, I'm making that motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Yeah, if I could just make the point, Councilor Miller raised the discussion earlier when he said we started out looking at a rehab of the police facility approximately two years ago for a cost of $1,200,000 to $1,500,000. We're now giving a cost, a potential bonding cost of $7.5 million, and we're now being told we're going to look at another site. I've lost track of all of these numbers not being on the subcommittee. I don't know how we got from $1,500,000 to where we are now. I remember the explanation was, there would be an extensive period of time that the police department would have to be relocated, put in a temporary facility, and operate out of a temporary facility, and the cost of that move and temporary operations, coupled with the cost of rehabilitation, militated against doing it as a rehab of the existing facility. The question I have now is, since the number has escalated to the point of $7.5 to potentially $9 million, I heard someone use tonight, have we revisited the question of what the cost of rehab plus the cost of relocation is versus $7.5 million or more? I'd like to have those numbers before I agree to expend even $12,000 to study another piece of land.
I agree.
Now, didn't we-
What happened, what happened on that was, when they looked at that building, the rehab, I believe totaled $5.6 million. Is that true, Murray? Pretty close to that. So, it wasn't, it wasn't the 1.2, 1.5, or 2, it was 5.6 versus, you know, 6.5 for a brand-new facility versus rehabbing the old facility. There was about, you know, $500,000, $800,000 difference in the prices. So, that's where, that's where those two price differences came in. The 1.2 was gone years ago.
Well, I also remember that, like, they were going to come back with a list of, here's, you know, the 20 things that need to be done and the estimated cost, and then based on how much we were going to spend or we wanted to spend, we would pick, like, the top however many we wanted done, and we would also have, not a public hearing, but a public information session so that we could present this to the public and get feedback from them. And none of that has happened. I know we don't have, you know, the actual cost or close to the actual cost, but we keep getting all these different sites and all these different costs, and it just keeps going up, and I don't feel comfortable spending $12,000 on another piece of property to see once if we're going to do anything there, because we don't know that that's what we're going to do yet. There's just not, I don't think we have enough information at this point in time, based on our discussions that we had a year, year and a half ago in regards to all of this.
Well, what's happened is, we've put no effort, no energy into figuring out the cost of rehabbing the current police station. We came up with a number, it was $3 million, then it was $4 million or $5 million, but that's more of a conceptual number, and we keep spending money to further find out how much more, how it's going to, how much it's going to cost to build a brand-new one, and no energy or no time spent on what it's going to cost to rehab the police department. So, it looks like people, certain people must have made up their mind that it's new already, yet there's been no discussion and no comparison. $3 million or $5 million compared to, let's make believe it's going to be $9 million when we're done. So, that's, you know, almost two rehabs you can do.
There was architectural appraisals on the rehab and architectural appraisal on the new building, and I believe they were presented to committees and council. So, check back into your records.
Yes, but it's been presented that we're going to keep continuing to see how much it's going to cost. We've never said, we've never voted on yea or nay on new versus old.
Well, then, we'll get the architects to come back with the new versus old.
Pardon?
We'll get the architects to come back with the new versus old to see the cost difference.
So, I'd like to speak to this. So, we all know that I'm the cheapest guy sitting up here. So, and I'm not running for office, so, so I'm going to tell you, you know, why I agree with the $12,000. So, we started out looking at this, and we looked at rehabbing it, and the biggest problem that building has is it was built like a residential home. That's the type of construction that it is, and it just is not a municipal building in the year 2020. We can throw all the money we want at it, it'll never be that, it'll still be a residential home that we have our PD in. So, you know, I served on the committee to look at our future town center, and we, you know, and so we're spending money on planning for something that's 50 to 100 years out. And I believe that we needed a plan. In looking at that, in looking at, we looked at about six sites over there, we spent money on probably two of them. We found out that, you know, it was expensive to build there and we were going to lose a ball field. So, looking across the street, and Public Works has done some soil testing there, it's all beautiful gravel, it will be easy to build over there, but we can't come back to the council with a price on a building unless we spend the money to do a topography over there like we did on the ball field and see how much earth we have to move, because it is, it's a, you know, gentle rise off the road and then it gets steep. So, if you're going to try and come up with a firm number, and I've never bought into the $7 million, you know, I've never bought into that. I just can't see-
Did you buy into the nine?
No, I don't buy into the nine.
I don't know where that came from.
I mean-
There was never a nine.
You know, the finishes in a PD building are not high-end, and, and, you know, they're using high-end residential per square foot cost. And, you know, and then when I called them on it and asked them what the new Branford fire station was going to cost, they had to admit that there was like down around $300 a square foot, not their $500 a square foot that they're using. So, so I've never bought into the $7 million. I certainly have never committed, like any of the rest of us have, to spending it, but I feel that if you're, you have to do something, we all know that, we all agreed on that. We have to do something there. So, if you want to consider building new, this would be the last, the last, you know, small amount of money spent so that we could get a price to put it across the street. Now, if you, if we, if we don't want to look at building new at all, then you certainly don't want to spend that money, and I agree with that. But we're not going to get, we're not going to get answers on that. I mean, you'd have to abandon building new in trying to come up with a number, and then just look at remodeling a building that we can't make into a, you know, you're not going to make it into a building the way a police department building is built in 2020. So, that's just my farewell address.
I have a small related issue to this, and one of the things that I would hope we do is show a lot of fairness in all of our deliberations, and I noticed that only a month ago, this council was brought an offer from one of our farms to buy that piece of property that now is being brought to us as the choice site for the police department. And I'm not at all confident that we're giving a fair shake to at least that request or even treating them fairly. They came in with a proposal to purchase the property above what it's valued now, in fact, at the large cost, large price that the town paid for it, putting it back on the tax rolls to the extent that farms are taxable property, enhancing a local business of long duration. And barely a month later, this comes in as, this is the place for it. So, I'm just raising my voice in sympathy to what I thought was an honest request by one of our, one of our farmers, and it just doesn't feel right emerging this way.
George, I'll give you a check for that piece of property for that price today.
Well, I'm not the only-
And I'm sure Al Rose will give you the price, that price if not more for that piece of property today. It's a giveaway, George. 20-something acres, George, in North Branford with excellent gravel. You can't give that piece of property away for that cost. You can't. I'll buy it tomorrow.
Well, we didn't offer it for sale as yet, and maybe we'll get a bidding war and, you know, get more money.
Why would you give away property in the center of town that the town could use?
I've got reservations about the police station, but I'm going to give priority to a town use over a private offer to purchase any day, and I don't think that's being unfair. I think that's just being practical.
Well, I don't think that there's been closure for the farmer on that offer, and that's what I'm arguing for. I think that the farmer deserves to have a formal answer to their request, and that hasn't been made.
So, George, our committee landed on trying not to move a ball field to save that money, because it's, you know, the last ball field was the Edward C. Wall that the state gave us, what, almost $900,000 to move. So, so we were looking at not having to move a ball field and not building it in a hole, because that was the biggest problem we had up there, was everywhere we put it, if we were trying to save, if we were trying to save one ball field, we were on, we were on the edge of the, you know, there's a ball field here and a ball field here, and we were going to take both of those ball fields in order to build it as economically as we could. So, by going across the street, you save both ball fields, and it's quite possible that the construction would be, you know, it'd be more economical to build there. But, you know, again, if you're not going to, if you're not looking to build a new building, then don't spend the $12,000. But to finish the point on whether you could sell it or not, once we, if we did spend the $12,000, then the architect and the engineer would be able to, you know, give us our estimates on what it would be to build over there, then if we're not building it over there, then the land could be sold. But right now, it's like, all right, we don't want to take that off the table. You know, we don't want to say we're going to put it up to auction. And if you remember, the last person that made it offer in town, they didn't win in the auction, so. And, you know, and I'm going to tell you right now, if the town auctions that land off, it will not go to a farmer. That land is easy to develop, and it'll be houses. And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with it, I made my living building houses, but that land is not going to go to a farmer at auction.
I'm just looking for it to be, for there to be a response to-
Well, I've talked to them personally, and I'm, they understand what we're doing.
Well, they presented, they presented to the council, so I thought that the council ought to make a response to that offer.
Well, I think we did, I think we did.
We told them that we can't just sell it to them.
Right.
That, of course.
We did tell them that.
Right. We did, that is the only thing we told them.
And then we voted in public session not to, not to sell it. So, we did.
I like to decide what we're going to do first before we go spending any more money on anything. That's my feeling.
But you can't decide on that site unless you can do some studying.
But that's what was said on the last one, the last one, I think it was $50,000 we spent, and that was the same response we got.
I don't, no, there's never been $50,000.
Oh, maybe it wasn't, I could be wrong.
That was a school, yeah.
No, no, it was, it was to mark boundaries.
We spent six topography-
There was something to mark boundaries. I'm sorry, I got the value wrong. But it was the same response, was my point, that, you know, we can't go anywhere, so, you know, where does this stop? We just going to keep spending?
I missed that, though. What happened with that piece of property? It wasn't, because we'd be moving two ball fields. So, it would be another $600,000.
But on the ball fields, have we really estimated, you know, is it moving two ball fields? Do we need the two ball fields? Because we've put some ball fields back online that weren't online, and what is the projection? And what has the sports, you know, I haven't heard anything from, you know, Park and Rec and the sports and how much the fields are, because I know some of, you know, there's some sports, and I'm, I don't know about baseball, but I know other sports have gone to co-op with other towns because- to co-op with other towns because the enrollment is down. So I'm not so sure that it's a blanket statement that two baseball fields have to be moved because we may not need two baseball fields. I mean, that's, I, I, that's information we don't have.
Fran spoke to the, you spoke to the Little League and the intermediate.
The one field is a, is a, a major league field which will have one, two of the top, and one will be drawn, so it'll be down to one. So I would say you probably have to. And Rose was saying about the enrollment stuff, you know, we don't know the numbers. We ask for them, we don't get them, so it's, it's a, but I will say this. We've built buildings in town, and we've always had pride because we didn't do it, go through the process that we're going through right now. And you have to go through the process. Twelve thousand dollars is good money in my book to make sure that we can do something there. Because look at your intermediate school. Look at the job that got done there. How many thousands or millions did we spend to fix stuff? And I can go through every purchase, every building that has happened to libraries. You know, you gotta do the research, and you're not gonna get a number on the police station, and you did get a number on the renovation. I don't remember what the number is, and it's been out there. But you gotta do the research. You know, you, you've got to do it. Now, we make a mistake every time. I've, I've been, I've been here twenty-five years and seen it. It's, it's killing me sitting here listening to this whole thing. You gotta do it right. Sorry.
I'd like to call the question. The motion's been made in second, and I mean, you're either gonna vote for it or not, and then we can move on.
Ball call?
Mayor Dute.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
I just want a clarification on voting. So voting for this twelve thousand dollars, because that's what the expenditure is, is to do.
Up to, up to.
Up, up to, okay. Does not mean that we're voting to build a new police station.
No. We're voting to study that piece of property.
I just want to make sure that, that is.
So that they can put a number on putting a building there.
Could be the town hall? Um, yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnan?
Yes.
Counselor Miller? Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
No.
Counselor Zampiano?
Yes.
I thank you people for your support.
Thank you.
I think it's the right move. You know, we have, I, I agree with Fran, you know, and, and I'll be in touch with you. Somehow I want to be included in the going forward with the building committee for this because I cannot stomach another intermediate school project, so I'll, I'll make the commitment to, to stay involved in whatever aspect the citizen can and, and serve on whatever committees I can going forward with, whether we end up remodeling the building or, or building it.
Some of what happened to the intermediate school could happen in new construction.
What's that?
Some of what happened to the intermediate school could have happened on new construction.
Yeah, because some of the intermediate school was new construction.
And, and, right, so that's, that's a concern.
We have to change the way, we gotta change the way who watches what.
Right.
When we're building something, and, and believe me, we.
Right.
We, we, we have a plan for that, so.
And George, if we save the old PD, we can make it a concession stand, you and I can sell hot dogs.
Well, look at all the time we'll have.
All right, next is discussion proposed ordinance, twenty nineteen dash twenty, proposed blight ordinance.
So we had our public hearing, and I thank everybody for your attendance and, and your testimony. Clearly, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of issues to be raised, but this is not, in a sense, covering new ground in, in the world. It's, it's new to us, but it's not, it's not anything particularly new. I heard the comments, I appreciate them. I think this draft is well organized, well considered. It's a much, much better given the contributions of, of the town attorney. It's not far reaching, and it's, it's doable. Two issues remain for me. One is the request by the town assessor to remove himself from the list of officers. I don't have a particular problem with that. The, the idea, as I said at the inception, is to make this effort for work for enforcement manageable with our current staff. We have a part-time zoning enforcement officer who will find the, the ordinance very helpful to the work that he does. He's concerned, was concerned initially that it was going to fall entirely on him, and by involving other frontline people in town, it takes that off of him, and my understanding of his reactions is very positive. There is a second request for withdrawal from enforcement by the police department, and I sit down here shocked beyond words that that would be, would be so. For more reasons than, than I will share, but I'm gonna share enough of them, trust me on that. The, the police department makes an argument in, in their material that they're crime And police officers wanna be crime fighters, but that's not really what their job is in, for the most part. The police, and, and, you know, Chief Halloran knows this because he talked about this when he was being interviewed for his position, as did, not coincidentally, every other candidate. Because the order maintenance function of law enforcement is the larger portion of what they do. And the, to, to go back to, you know, a long time ago, in this community, in any community, policing was established to maintain order, to be aware of fire, be aware of theft, be aware of animals, be aware of problems. And this has been a problem that law enforcement has handled right along. The, in, in the, in the common vocabulary, when we talk about policing, you hear the term "community policing." And community policing, which is a buzzword throughout most of the country, is absolutely based on what is essentially a blight ordinance. And to, to call it anything else is, is absurd. Ask anyone who talks about community policing, and they will say, "It got its start with the theory of broken windows," which, you know, was a study back in the seventies. You know, I went on the police department in nineteen sixty-nine, and I taught for twenty-six years at, at the academy. I'm absolutely, I find Chief Halloran's request bizarre, and, and particularly destructive to an effort in this community to get a little bit of relief for a problem without sending us to go hire more people or overburden the existing people. The, the whole idea is that we're engaged in a collaborative effort to maintain a certain standard of living here, a certain standard of conducting ourselves, and not supplying services on a, on an individual basis. And finally, although I may spout off again, you know, Chief Halloran makes a, an argument that he doesn't have enough officers. Well, you know, I resent that. We just took positions for frontline patrol officers and turned them into management. So are we short for our frontline officers? Well, we're short because we decided to give people titles and, and pay them larger amounts of money and, you know, self-create a shortage. So I'm, I'm sorry, I can't be supportive of Chief Halloran's request for exclusion of police officers.
I have a question for Attorney Marino. I was, it was brought to my attention today, Connecticut statute nineteen A dash two oh six, was that taken into account in terms of?
Give me the statutory reference.
It's nineteen A dash two oh six, which is duties of municipal law, directors of health, et cetera. Do we, do we look at that as another avenue to look at the blight? I have, I have it with me if you think.
Well, and I, I can, I can pull it up online, but as, as I said, at the subcommittee, as, believe I said here, all Connecticut general statutes are, in their current form, unless they require an action of a, of a legislative body to enact an ordinance, are available to the municipal staff for purposes of.
No, but I was just thinking that that, the East Shore Health District is another avenue, though, that could be monitoring.
Right, again.
According to that statute.
Again, that's what I said, when a complaint comes in, because even a blight ordinance is a discretionary, in order to enforce it, it's a discretionary act on the part of an enforcement officer. And a matter may be better suited for the public health code rather than the blight ordinance. It might be better suited for the building code, it might be better suited for the zoning regulations. This is something that is up to the enforcement officer to decide, and, you know, you know, again, I, I appreciate the subcommittee's desire to spread the, the workaround, and, you know, you, you just do also want to make certain that you have a continuity of enforcement, and you don't have, you know, because it is discretionary, so if you have too many enforcement officers, are you getting into potentially, you know, enforcement concerns? You know, why did you use blight on me and not on them? Why, you know, these are the things that you're gonna have to address. Is the unintended consequences for trying to do something positive? That people are always going to say, "But why'd you do this for me and not for them?" And then you get into selective enforcement concerns. You know, some towns have multiple enforcement officers, sometimes limit it to one or two. So, you know, that's the, the one, there's no right or wrong answer to the question. The question is, what do you think is best for your community?
The problem is, this is more of a shotgun effect than actually limit it to one or two people that can enforce this ordinance. Because I, I could foresee problems, somebody has a problem with somebody, and, you know, they're not cited, they're cited in the shotgun effect, they're gonna pick on that neighbor because they have personal grudge with them, or personal problem with them.
That's something that all enforcement officers need to be cautious against.
So instead of, instead of two people, so far you probably have thirty people here.
Understood. And I, I raised concerns with respect to the enforcement process and the, that with respect to enforcement, it needs to be applied uniformly. And it should be, and it can be, but should be, if adopted, should be you, seen as another tool to get compliance, not a tool used for punitive measure. If it's used for punitive measure, it doesn't accomplish the intent of what the ordinance is designed for. And that is to develop a minimum standard to help preserve the general integrity and character of the town. That's what the blight ordinance is supposed to do. It's not supposed to be used for any other purpose, and if any enforcement officer is found to have done that, that creates liability to the town.
So how is it handled now?
The, I spoke to the zoning enforcement, so what, he employs a different process around because he doesn't have a blight ordinance. So he uses the, he uses the zoning regulations, he uses the, the housing prosecutor through the criminal court system, so he uses criminal justice code. It's, it's a way of accomplishing, and as you heard testimony tonight, he has done positive with the tools that he has available to him. You know, and so among the, the questions is, you know, you do have zoning regulations, you do have a public health code, you do have a building code, you have a number of codes that are currently in place to utilize for purposes of, of bringing properties into compliance. The, the point of an ordinance like a blight ordinance is multifaceted. You want to create general notice to your residents as to what expectations are. You know, you never want anyone to be receiving a complaint or a citation saying, "Well, I didn't know." You know, so what I think the blight ordinance attempts to do better is establish minimum standards to put the general public on notice that we have expectations. You're gonna keep your property free of debris, you're gonna keep your property within a certain condition. It's, you know, it's not telling people what they must do on their property with respect to, we'll call it have to paint their house or things like that. And what it does is say, "Look, at, at a minimum, we would expect, unless there's a legitimate reason." Someone instead wants to have a front lawn, they want to have a lawn of wildflowers." You know, we had discussed that at the subcommittee. You know, but if it's general grass, I think the consensus of the subcommittee was twelve inches or more for a period of thirty days or more. So it's not unreasonable in that way. Someone goes away on vacation, they're gone for two or three weeks, they come home.
So, blight, okay, so the person who's responsible for the planning and zoning or persons at the moment, is, is this too much work for them?
Short answer, I'm not gonna speak to that person's feeling of whether or not he's overpaid and under, underworked. So, but, I, what I'm going to say is that this is a, this is a tool that would be available.
The way it's always been handled, is the zoning enforcement's handled any type of situation like that. And if they fail to gain any momentum, it's gone to the town attorney, and the town attorney's gone to court and had certain blight issues taken care of. So you had basically two people, the zoning enforcement officer and the town attorney. And now we're getting into the shotgun effect where we're gonna have forty people doing it.
Right.
Well, but my other point too to that, what I was getting to Mike was, if we're gonna go to that and say, "Well, there's gonna be multiple people," then that mean, that would mean, that would show me that our current employees are underutilized if they have time to do this. That's kind of where I was going with that.
Well, again.
And I'm not saying they are, I'm saying that's what it look, that's what it appears to show me.
Again, I, I was of an opinion that was different from the subcommittee, but it's, this is the recommendation of the subcommittee. All right, it is your option, if you want to advance the ordinance, to limit and restrict the enforcement officers to just the zoning enforcement officer. This should not be seen as adding to anyone's plate. This should be seen as a viable alternative option to utilize in a circumstance where a complaint presents that fits within the ordinance. Any complaint that fits within this ordinance is likely going to fit under a number of other existing codes, including zoning, health, and building. The point of this ordinance is, if you were to adopt it, is that the enforcement officer would have the discretion to say, "I have, I'm gonna utilize a blight ordinance," and the benefit to that is unlike a zoning regulation that is going to not put the town in a super priority position, which is going to give it a greater leverage with maybe a mortgage, with a bank, or some, that, you don't get that. with a bank, or some, that, you don't get that leverage with a zoning regulation or with the health code or, so it's, it should not be seen as anything other than a viable alternative to what you already have. That who you use to enforce, I represent seven towns, and generally I see it as the zoning office as being the enforcement of ordinances like this. It doesn't mean this is wrong. It means this is a decision that you have to decide. This is a recommendation of a subcommittee. You can reject their recommendation in whole or in part, that's your discretion.
There's two parts to this, Tom. And, you know, I grant the one that you raised of how many people are enforcing it. But, and as I pointed out earlier, and the town attorney just mentioned, where we stand in applying liens is enhanced. But the meat of it, the violations that would move this are not addressed by zoning regulations. They're problems that are not addressed specifically by the health codes. These are additional tools for people who the council chooses to enforce some of these things. So there's two parts of it, from my perspective, in the writing of it. One is to address some behaviors or violations or actions that are not addressed and not addressable. The zoning enforcement officer can encounter them, but has no tools to seek, to remedy them. And the second part is spreading the work to the extent that when a frontline person encounters it, they can handle it right then and there, or start handling of it. Police officers handle, have ongoing complaints, investigations, as do, does the building official and so on, or the fire marshal. You know, it may be that it spreads it out too much in your mind, and that's fine, but this is a tool to address problems that does not exist, basically, elsewhere. So that's an important thing to think about.
So I have a question for the town attorney on, so in the other towns that you or your firm represent, have you ever seen a bank spend one dollar to clean up a property?
We routinely get paid from lenders because they want to protect their lien interests in the real estate. When we represented the town of Trumbull, we took in over a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in fines under their blight ordinance. You know, so it is an effective tool and to bring in money, and I think if anyone's going to pay, generally it is the lender. Because money is fictitious in the lending world. So they just will send you a check, and it is purely sent for purposes of protecting the property.
So did the town clean them up, then?
It depended on, again, I can't give you a uniform answer because it depends on the situation, but I can say uniformly, we have received payment from lending institutions because of the lending institution's need to protect its priority interest in the property.
So what I'm seeing in my neighborhood is, and there's probably, just on Valley Road, there's probably, Granny might know, Bill Van Wilden complains about it, there's probably eight or nine properties, but what they appear to be, because we know the history on some of them are, they were the elderly people who actually purchased the house in the early nineteen sixties, some of them my dad built, still the original families, and then they took a reverse mortgage about twenty years ago when the house was worth here. Now the banks are upside down on them, and so what I see going on in our neighborhood is, the banks ask ridiculous money, and it's like it takes them a year to finally admit that they're upside down, and then they go to auction and some, and it's finally happening. There's a couple of them that have been bought, and, you know, and once they're bought, the new people come in and clean them up and, you know, and the problem's over. But, I mean, just on our road, there's eight or nine properties that have been that way for at least, at least a year, some of them maybe four years.
There's one on Forest Road that's been almost four years.
So, and the banks own them, so.
Yeah. This was a reverse mortgage, too.
Right. The reverse mortgages, the banks must be saying, boy, that was a bad idea. But, so, so I don't know how much blight, so you're saying that the ordinances you have, the banks.
We've gotten payment.
Because I've never seen a bank clean up anything. They just lose more money.
Which is not a problem for them. And I appreciate that, so again, I can't account for every situation, because every situation's going to be different. But I do see uniformly, they will make payment. And again, as a first order of business, should this ordinance get into place, as I stated to the subcommittee, my recommendation always is for the enforcement officer to have a dialogue with the property owner before taking any action. Because the enforcement officer needs to determine, what is the situation that I'm dealing with? In some situations, we're dealing with mental health issues, we're dealing with hoarding situations, we're dealing with, you know, we're dealing with elderly, we're dealing with families struggling to put bread on the table to feed their children. So everyone has a situation that needs to be taken into account before we take a punitive step. And the subcommittee was appreciative of that process, and an informal, unstated method, which is the way I have found better success with bringing properties forward toward compliance. You're not necessarily going to bring a property into compliance overnight in every situation because every set of facts are going to be different depending on the situation. You know, I would, as your town attorney, probably hesitate to advance a blight process against a, really a hardship situation where you have an elderly person, or you have a sick person, or you have, you know, I'd work to, I'd work with that property owner in the first instance and explore all opportunities of resolution before this was advanced. And the process allows for that. You know, just be, and in most situations, even with the accrual of fines, the purpose here is not to collect money, the purpose is to bring compliance and conformity within your community. So this is about, again, adopting an ordinance that will bring another tool to your community if you decide to do that, but it should not be employed with reckless disregard for the fact that these are your neighbors, and these are people who live in your community, and you need to take them into account when using any enforcement tool. And adopting that kind of philosophy, I've had great success in bringing these properties into compliance. And when it comes to the lenders, you know, you have to communicate to the appropriate, you know, most of them will have property management teams that deal at the local level, and you have to discover who they are, and you have to get in contact with them. And generally, when you do, I've had people out mowing lawns that afternoon. So in Town Ranch, we had a complaint at eight in the morning, we made a call at eleven AM, and they were out mowing the next day. So, and you also have your option of cleaning lien. You know, so if the town is having a complete problem, you can go in and you can clean up the property, and you can then put a lien on the property. So there's plenty of options if you want to have them. Whether or not you have one enforcement officer or a hundred enforcement officers, that's your decision. My advice is you limit the number of enforcement officers to a number that is reasonable to ensure conformity in enforcement.
So can we make it so these, this list of agents make a referral to the zoning enforcement officer, who then carries it forward?
You could make it that it's only the zoning enforcement officer. You could make it that it's zoning enforcement officer and five others. You know, so I don't know if I would necessarily, because anyone can make a complaint. So to put the police on notice that they have to make complaints to the ZEO, I don't think you need to do that. To the extent anyone in the world can come in here and make a complaint that property ABC on Main Street, USA is a blighted problem, that's a complaint. You know, that triggers a process for the enforcement officer to go out and inspect. So, you know, I would simplify it and not, if your inclination is to limit the number of enforcement officers, I would simply do that. Anyone from the public will have the opportunity to bring in a complaint when they feel they are, have a problem with any property. It's not necessarily on their block. Maybe they cross down on Route eighty and they cross a blighted property every day, and it just is annoying to them. You know, so some of us have blinders on, like myself, and there's never a blight that I see because I'm just looking straight ahead and listening to my music. Other people see blight everywhere they turn. So that it's going to be up to the enforcement officer, and you have to have the confidence in your staff and your enforcement officers that they're going to do what is appropriate based on the circumstances presented.
But first, we have to determine if we have a blight problem.
Yeah, but, right. And what I was going to say, like, you know, I wanted to thank the public for coming out and listening to everyone. You know, I think the first thing is education. You know, to educate even the public and everyone on blight and on, you know, what to, you know, bring forward and what not to. I mean, I think most people do have pride of ownership. You know, they want their property to look nice. You know, I can give a perfect example. I mean, I fell ill with cancer, and there was a time I couldn't cut my lawn. You know, I was going through chemo, and my lawn got high. I was waiting for you to turn me in, but you did. One of my neighbors came over and cut the lawn for me, which was really nice. But, you know, so there are a lot of extenuating circumstance and whatnot, which I know, you know, was addressed in here. But I think if you can, you know, educate a lot of the public on, you know, I don't think anyone's looking to hurt their neighbor or, you know, people worry about their property values, and they worry about the town looking nice, you know, like George. I know you're not running for the council, so you can probably cut lawns and make things look nice here and there. But, you know.
Then I can make money.
And I agree with what Mike's saying, you know, if we have eight or nine different enforcement officers, one may handle it differently than another one. And I think what Mike is trying to say is get some continuity, maybe in the way it's handled. You know, even Attorney Moreno was saying, you know, you get a lot more, you know, beef with sugar, so, you know, the way it's handled in the GECO, you know, rather than going right to a citation or, you know, whatever.
Mine is to get it to one person, so one person's responsible for it.
Right.
Not forty people.
Right.
So, you get forty referrals coming in, you know, from different people, instead of one that's making the decision.
Yeah, but the one thing that keeps, I keep thinking about is, we have about five thousand families in town. And I'm not sure that they feel this way. And so we're going to put on, you know, an ordinance on the books, a rule.
Yeah.
And that's concerning to me.
Yeah. I mean, and.
Well, if you think, don't think there's blight in town, I could assure you there's blight in town.
It's just in foreclosure.
You know.
Now, you see that house?
There's blight here.
Broken lawnmower on the front lawn, you know, the grass is getting high.
Yes, but.
Now, the bank owns that.
We're representing the community, right? Everybody.
Yeah, I agree.
And there's five thousand families in, roughly five thousand families in town.
I'm leery, too.
And that's, that concerns me.
Well, that, this could be addressed, if you wanted to, simply by looking at the definitions for what constitutes the Performance and Property Maintenance Standards Officer, which is on page two of the document. And you can feel free to simply strike whatever individuals in that listing. Again, the listing was developed to defuse the responsibility to make it more manageable. And as I said at the outset, one of the fears of the zoning enforcement officer, who is part-time, was to be overwhelmed. And, you know, he was as cautious about taking on further responsibilities as the chief of police, not wanting to take on more responsibilities. I know that everybody's flat out, I understand that. Just ask them, and you'll see. But if there are people there that you feel are unnecessary, inappropriate, or you feel uncomfortable about it, then we should address that. But, you know, as Counselor Candelara pointed out, we should tell people what the standards are, but the standards that are raised in here, and the definitions that are raised in here appear nowhere else in our town codes. They're not under zoning. They don't clearly fall under Department of Health, East Shore Health District. So as Attorney Moreno said, it's another tool. So really, if you're comfortable with it as another tool, then your question becomes, to whom do you wish to give the tool? And I think that's what we're talking about here.
I just have one question. It's under Section Nine, enforcement of the citation, and number five says that they have the ability of a hearing procedure before the blight appeals committee. Who is, who appoints the blight appeals committee, and is there a definition of, like, who has to be on that?
It was thought to be the zoning board of appeals. We tried to work with an existing bodies. The idea, at least from my point of view and from others, of trying to create new committees and staff them with all the problems of trying to staff new committees, and particularly ones that meet irregularly or don't handle these type of matters, seems to be solved by making it simply one more function for zoning enforcement, zoning board of appeals, which typically handles matters of this type.
So I guess I would feel more comfortable stating that it's the zoning board of appeals rather than the blight appeals committee? Because it's not defined as to who the blight appeals.
It does later in eleven, Section eleven, right? Isn't that where?
Well, then, then there should just be consistency.
Yeah, it's eleven B.
Eleven B.
Eleven B.
Or we could add a definition.
Well, no, I mean, it's in eleven B, which is fine, so.
And this is, again, this is unique, I found it to be an interesting concept, and I kind of thought it was a good concept, in that the ZBA is going to be the body where appeals go to from acts of the enforcement officer unrelated to blight. So why not? The statute under seven dash one fifty-seven C provides, it's a hearing for a hearing officer. It doesn't define who the hearing officer is. So, you know, to put it before a body that generally reviews actions of your enforcement officer, whether or not they're appropriate.
Which is fine. I mean, I have no problem with it.
I didn't see any law that prohibited it.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that. I don't, I mean, it's.
So I think that, I think that the hearing should be the town council. If the town council votes it in, then that's who should, they should bring the appeal I differ a little bit than the town attorney, and you're not the first town attorney I question.
I'm not offended.
Normally, I'm right.
You're the client.
So, you know, town government is by law out of zone. All right? And town government gets in trouble if they get into zoning. So this ordinance is not zoning. And the ZBA only hears things that are zoning issues, and I think it should be completely separate. I think that if you're, so if the town decided to go forward with this, the elected officials should be the one that have to hear it and make the final decision if somebody gets all the way to an appeal.
One thing, Al. One thing, Al. The...
Sorry, I couldn't quite hear it.
Siri disagrees.
Oh, were you taping mine? No, it just went off on its own. I followed though. No, they're taping it.
Understand that if citations are issued to anyone for a blight, they don't have to go to, through this channel. They can go directly to Superior Court. And we're not taking that step away from them, but of course, we're not...
Yeah, but we would want something in town that's easier than that for somebody to appeal to.
Well, you make it available to them, sure. But they always have the ability, even if they have a negative judgment by the town council, is that not correct?
Yes, they can file a motion to review the action with the, under the, under the conclusive court statutes.
Yeah, so they can always go to Superior Court, just so that's clear.
And just, so, for purposes of this ordinance, while, yes, this is a ZBA as constituted, again, people can, people wear multiple hats. And for the purpose of what this ordinance, what the subcommittee was saying is, for this purpose, they're not sitting as a ZBA. We're referring them to the ZBA because we're going to have the body be the members as constituted on the ZBA. But they're sitting as the, basically, the Blight Review Hearing Office Committee, you know, however the ordinance were to define it. So, I don't want the, for record purposes, we're kind of saying, this is a body that we've, as a community, put together to review decisions of enforcement officers. We're not saying it's the ZBA. We're saying the hearing officer should be comprised of the ZBA. But when they sit in this capacity, they're not sitting as a ZBA, they're sitting in this capacity.
So, he answered my concerns with that, because I'm like, the ZBA can only rule on zoning issues, which a town ordinance is, you know, so...
That's how we lawyer at it.
Perfect, that was a good, that was a good comeback.
Thank you. That's why, I'm sitting.
Well, how do we go?
Well, so, well, I guess if we wanted to, it sounded like the biggest, one of the biggest concerns was all the people that could go out there. So, if we just redefine on...
We have to do nine and thirteen.
Well, under definitions...
Well, if, Madam Deputy Mayor, if you simply want to, for purposes of this process, advise, state on the record who you want to be the enforcement officer, because there's a number...
PPMs?
There's a number of areas of the ordinance that would have to be modified.
Correct.
And I would modify it and then work with the town clerk to conform the ordinance, to make sure the ordinance conforms with whatever you decide.
Okay.
So, instead of going through the process, going through the ordinance, I think, so question number one would be, what is the desire of the body if the desire is to advance this toward approval, to modify the existing ordinance to limit the enforcement officer? Do you want to eliminate, do you want to eliminate everyone but the CEO or do you want to reduce it to a certain number of multiple people? That's the question.
I have no problem with those people making a referral, but I want it to go to one person.
Okay.
Which is a zoning enforcement officer.
So, you agree with that.
So, to simplify your process, try to help you...
But, but can't a resident make a referral?
That's wrong. I wouldn't make, I wouldn't include in the ordinance the referral process. I would simply eliminate everyone but who wants to be the CEO.
I know, that's what I want to...
A resident could make a complaint to any of these officials.
Oh, okay.
And then it goes to the zoning enforcement officer and then he takes the proper action.
So, I think a resident should make a complaint to the zoning enforcement officer and only, and, like, why do you need more people than that?
You don't.
So, then, so, all right, so the ordinance, if I want to hear it correct, is the ordinance should be amended to limit the enforcement officer to only the CEO. Okay, just for purposes of when you put your motion together.
Does everybody agree with that or... I mean, I just don't want to...
All right, so, CEO, only enforcement, okay. Are there any other changes that you would like to see to the ordinance before it's put on the table?
Other than that, the ordinance looks good.
So, where are you guys with, you want, you want the people sitting on ZBA to wear two hats then? You want them to answer or be the appeal board?
I don't want, I don't want the blight myself.
So, I'm asking you.
So, you don't want the blight or the blight ordinance?
I don't want the blight ordinance.
Yeah.
I think we're overreaching pretty far right now, in my opinion.
And that might be where it lands.
Then Section Five and Seven are missing two throughout a numerical sequence. It goes from four to six to eight.
Four to six.
On the section.
Oh, I see, I see. So, all right, all right, so, to amend the ordinance also to make it in proper numerical order. And then, I guess, I heard, who should the hearing officer be? So, again, option there is as recommended, recommended by the subcommittee to be your ZBA, or the statute simply refers to hearing officer and there would be hearing officers appointed in accordance with the statute, which tend to be just citizens of the town who sit to listen to the evidence and then form a judgment. That's your, that's basically your option. So, you can leave it as is or you can amend that.
Any suggestions? Leave it as is?
I would suggest, as an alternative, a subcommittee of this town council, say, three members of the town council designated as a subcommittee to be hearing officers. In the event that ZBA is overwhelmed or they decline to do it or they're incompetent to do it, it comes back here. We started it, we cleaned it up.
So, would that be an alternative or a replacement of?
Replacement of. I'd go either way.
Okay. It could be based upon, again, it could be, because the statute requires hearing with no earlier than fifteen days from the notice of appeal and no later than thirty days unless the hearing officer decides to appeal, to continue it for a valid reason. So, there could be a reason why you need an alternative if you're going to have it as a body, because you may have...
The timing, yeah.
Right.
Timing issues.
Okay, so, the alternative, a three-member subcommittee of this body, appointed by the mayor. Appointed by the mayor. There you go.
I'm the mayor.
Yeah, we don't need another meeting. Okay, so I have three alterations at the moment. Are there any others? All right, just so, you have an ordinance before you with, which will be amended to limit the enforcement officer to the CEO, to ensure that it is in proper numerical order, and to add a alternative hearing officer as a three-member subcommittee of this body appointed by the mayor.
So, break that one down. Who's it go to first?
Well, that could, timing could dictate that. Schedule could dictate things, meaning that the availability...
So, the first body it goes to is the three-member panel.
The town council?
Yes.
Okay.
Second body it goes to is...
ZBA.
ZBA.
Also, the council, three members.
I would just let the three-member council be the final say in town. Because, where were you with that, Joe? Because you have, you have a pool of...
I think a three-member subcommittee with two people constituting a quorum.
We meet every two weeks, so it's not a big deal.
And you have, you have a body of nine to choose from, so you should be able to get three people without a problem.
And if failure to get a unanimous vote, the appeal is sustained and action of the CEO is overturned.
So, you want unanimous consent on...
If we're going to let two people rule, you can't, what are you going to do if you get a one-on-one vote?
Okay, yep. So, unanimous consent in the event of a quorum of two, but if it's a quorum of three, if there's a meeting of three...
I'm amenable to anything that gets through this debate.
I was there thirty minutes ago.
I would suggest, since we're having so much discussion on this, that the changes are made and then brought back for discussion again.
That's up to the body.
Because there's an awful lot of, this is taking a lot, I'm watching the clock here, this is taking a lot of time.
The problem with that, to be honest, is that you're going to have a new council, you're going to have people who need to be brought up to speed.
Right, but what concerns, right, but what concerns me, George, is that, you know, we're going through changes, you know, a couple of us might sleep on it, read it again, and, hey, what about this change? What about that change? Or, you know, maybe we need to take this out. Really, we're going through quite a bit of dialogue here. And I think that's pretty significant.
One is I commend you for the dialogue, notwithstanding the fact that I agree with council member on the time, timing of it, but that's the will of the body, whatever the body decides.
It doesn't hurt to look at it more than once. The new body ought to be able to voice their opinion. They're going to have to enforce it. You're going to be long gone if it's not...
I mean, I'll make a motion to tables for further discussion and bring back to our next meeting if there's any further questions or information that we can discuss.
A second.
Any further discussion?
Just for clarification, that would be the regular, full regular meeting on November nineteenth, not the organizational, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
And this will be the only thing on me, Jack.
No, 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 the nineteenth is a regular meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, I had to.
All right, roll call.
I already packed it in, sorry. Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
No.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
Counselor Zampano?
Yes.
All right, next item is discussion and approval of QA and M contract for North Bramford High School feasibility study.
Yeah, I have a contract that I presented to the town attorney for his review, which he has done and I believe appears to be in order, has a schedule that he's sending around as well.
Yes, just for, you just take one, what I'm passing along, so what is not in your packet, I believe, are the exhibits to the contract. There are four exhibits. Exhibit A is the RFP. I believe Exhibit B is the response to the RFP. Exhibit C is the certificate of insurance. Exhibit D is the work schedule. In order to save trees, I'm only passing out Exhibit D, because you've approved the RFP, you've awarded it pursuant to the response, the certificate of insurance is in order, and this is the work schedule. So, I thought this was the only information that was pertinent to your decision-making process. There were some minor typographical errors that I discovered in the contract, but other than that, there were no material change. And the typos were spacing issues.
So, so I know this was the original work schedule that they submitted with their, you know, RFP, but we didn't award until September.
Yeah, they're going to...
So, this whole thing is most likely getting revised.
It is, right, exactly, yeah. That's correct, and I will get that from...
Because, well, because in October, they're doing the final report to the stakeholders,
which is us, and we're in October, so I guess, okay. Do you know, do you know what there's, I know there was the informational meeting that they had, you know, like a week or two weeks ago.
And they kind of went through a rough, and I think we discussed it at the last meeting in terms of time, but I can certainly get him to update that.
So, is it like January?
I think it's January.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think he's looking at January for that.
Okay.
But I think for purposes of schedule, I would assume that, other than changing the months and the year, the...
It's about a five one.
The format should be consistent.
I agree.
I'll make the motion.
The North Bramford Town Council hereby approves the AIA contract with QA and M for architectural services related to the RFP number nine, two thousand eighteen dash nineteen feasibility study for North Bramford High School.
Second.
Discussion.
Is that for the fifty of the...
Yeah.
Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
And Counselor Zampano?
Yes.
Next is financial report, September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Unremarked. Stole my line, yeah. Remains unremarkable. The revenues, again, the top line property taxes, right about where we were last year at this time, fifty-three point one, fifty-three point oh. Revenue about six tenths of a point below last year. Expenses do appear to be about one percent ahead of last year. Again, only one quarter of the weight of the year done, so nothing too significant yet. No departments are over expended. Yeah, I will point out the elderly housing, which is the sewer use fee that we pay for the elderly housing complex on Route one thirty-nine, is going to be over expended because we didn't contemplate going to four seventy-five at the budget time for the sewer user fee. So, that will be over expended when the second payment is made in next April, so we'll have to transfer money at that point. But aside from that, report remains unremarkable. Any questions, anybody has?
Thank you. Contingency appropriation.
There's three items on the, again, the one you added earlier tonight, the twelve thousand dollars will be put onto this list. The twenty-five thousand dollar Bloom Shapiro Award that you awarded for the municipal and school financial and human resource, that was actually added during the budget process, put into contingency and funded through fund balance, that we're basically appropriating that now. There's been a quote received to do the roof repairs at Stanley T. Williams and an adjustment to the police cleaning contract, causing their contractual account to be over expended, and this is a way to cover that.
The nineteen eight nine six.
Thirty-sixty-nine, yeah.
The sixty-nine eighty-four, short, yeah.
So, are the other departments who have the cleaning contract also short?
Uh, no, they're, no.
For some reason, they never received it.
Right. That was discussed today, they never received that.
Their budget hasn't changed in four years on that line, so...
So, either somebody had it in or somebody did send it up, so...
Yeah. The actual versus what their budget had has been wrong for like four years. So, it's just a matter of catching up to it now and making the corrections.
Somebody want to make that motion?
May it be resolved if the North Bramford Town Council hereby approves the following appropriation transfers as recommended by the town manager and the treasurer, finance director.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
Counselor Zampano?
Yes.
Appropriation transfers.
Just one appropriation transfer received from the Police Department for the communications budget, moving money from the overtime account to the part-time wages account.
The North Bramford Town Council hereby approves the following appropriation transfers as recommended by the town manager and the treasurer, finance director.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
Counselor Zampano?
Yes.
Next is approval of tax refunds.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Mayor Duty?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni?
Yes.
Counselor Candelora?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Counselor Viglione?
Yes.
Counselor Zampano?
Yes.
And next item, citizen statements and petitions?
Good evening again, or it's a good morning, I don't know. Wanted to put the human side to this nine forty-four to tuck it, and I'm glad Chuckie's here tonight, Kurt's here. I'm more than satisfied what's happened over there. They've done a fantastic job. There's been a human side to this. The dates had to slip. But the, the person doing the work, his son, was part of a real horrific truck accident. God, none of us should have to go through what he went through. He's still being haunted by it, the son of the contractor. So the date slipped. But we gotta be, gotta realize, things happen, and there was a human factor, and they've more than made up for it. And I'm not a tree hugger, so I was taking stumps out today. And I got to talk to the contractor. He was working right next to where I was in my backyard. And he's doing the best he can, and he's doing a fantastic job. I want to thank Kurt for being on top of it. Chuckie's been great, the town attorney's been great. I've kept my mouth shut, that's a miracle in itself. And I just want to say something positive about it. It's not all court and legal mumble jumble. It's a human side to this, and it affected the date, but, but it's horrendous what this kid's going through. He's losing sleep and traumatic. I mean, so, God, I hope none of us have to go through it. That being said, that's good news. The sad news is, when that man talks, you better start listening to him. Every month I come up and I ask you, how's that rake brick job going? That's just a, you guys are just pouring money into that school. I mean, you might as well take dollar bills and stuff them behind the brick wall, because that's the only way you're gonna stop the water.
We're working on it, Cliff.
I know, but, but who, yeah, you're picking up everybody else's mess. Like Freddie says, stop bargain basement buildings. They come back to haunt you. Al said it. So, yeah, build a new building on the hill. Not me.
Now you got nine forty-four all set, so what are you gonna do with all your spare time?
I don't have any, yeah, don't worry, I'm, yeah, you know, um, listen to Freddie.
How many years was that project?
Twenty. I'll be dead, yeah, if we take another one on. Yeah, it was actually two thousand and two, because we were activated for nine eleven.
Told you we'd get it straightened out.
Yeah, well, yeah. So it took a while, but it's good. Everybody involved is good. So again, you gotta start spending money right. Then you won't have to spend it on the backside. Listen to that man. What's that man say? No flat roofs, right, Al?
I gotta bring this up. Al and I talked about that rake job, that rake job when it was going out. We said it was no good.
Yeah, but it got out.
And it fell on deaf ears, because nobody listened to us.
Why aren't those people hanging from the rafters out here? They cost, they're still costing us money.
Two of them are in the ground, so...
Okay, well... So again, to save two bucks, maybe you're gonna have to spend two hundred and two. You know what I'm saying? But when Freddie gets upset enough, you gotta start listening to him, because the list is here. NBIS, the ambulance barn was condemned before they opened it. You had to rebuild that. And I'm gonna keep telling you this. Roofs on the schools. How many times Noah's Ark held more water than those roofs do? Rake brick, you know, it's, the library, the thermal wells, where are we with that? Are they still thermal or are they just holes in the ground?
They're fine now, they're straightened out.
So again, the police station, listen to Al. It's a barn, it's a house, it's not a police station. So if you try to rent something, what are you gonna rent? Build new, move them in there, but do it right. Do it once, so it won't cost us taxpayers money year after year after year, because we, with what we've spent on these buildings, you could have a Taj Mahal over there already. But, but you nickel and dimed, or dollars and ten dollars, all these other things that went bad. And other town council, I mean, I'm here a lot, you know that. And I've sat back there, and we've heard the same old thing, and it just never stops. It's gotta stop. And on that note, I want to thank the three gentlemen that are leaving for your time and your efforts, and a lot of, a lot of knowledge just going out that door. And luckily, he said he'd be still available. Anthony, nothing but the best for you, keeping the conic wire. And I always enjoyed talking to him when he was mayor. We'd have a cup of coffee, we could talk. Still did it the old-fashioned way. So again, now you can spend more time with your wife vacationing, right? Wasting your money, right?
Hardly a waste.
I know. So again, we'll see who's here next year or next month, you know, and we'll move on. But again, we gotta really, really start watching where the dollars are going, because you're just floating out of here. And, so yeah, the tough decisions gotta be made, but the long-term results have gotta be looked at too, because we've made some pretty stupid decisions, not you guys, other councils and other groups that had power they shouldn't have had. It's gotta stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Savistano, you guys spent a lot of time on the talking blight and this enforcement of it. And like I said before, why isn't the zoning enforcement officer here? Was he not invited? Does he not know what's going on? Like I said, he presented something when they first started talking about, the committee started talking, putting this thing together. And that's all in there. Bring him here and let him, let him speak for himself. Rather than us speaking for him. Reference to the police station, you know, you've been talking about this probably four years now. It's been coming up and going around. They gave us four options last June, was it? You know, the lower one was like a million, a little over a million, plus almost three-quarters of a million to move the police out of there while the renovation was going on. That's almost best, like, three million. And I said from the beginning, if you remember, I think he, they was not selling you a bill of goods, but they were selling you a new police station. They made the new police station so cheap that you really forgot about renovations within the first week. Why go be built new? That's cheap enough. Really, you've been talking about police long enough. That, that could have been done by now. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I want to just speak as a retiring council member that I appreciate all the support from everyone in town that supported me. And I'm sure out of all those years, at some point, they said, wow, he had a good idea, you know? But, um, you know, my family has started another venture that, at the moment, is a definite tiger by the tail, and, uh, so I just don't have, uh, I don't have the time to give up. But I really enjoyed my term giving back to the community and, um, thank the town, and I really appreciate all the people I've served with, because we take a lot of heat up here, we get called a lot of names. It's gotten a lot worse with social media. And, and I always have said, I respected the person that stands up here and calls us a name. You know, the ones that hide behind a mouse on a computer or, or behind a screen, that I don't take too seriously.